Thank you for joining us this evening for the August 29, 2023, Monterino Joint Special Meeting of the City Council and Site in Architectural Commission. So before the meeting is called to order, I would like to announce the house forms to assist the council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation within special meetings of the City Council and Site in Architectural Commission. For those using Zoom to participate, there are a few icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues so that you can be unable to hear a council member or commissioner speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants currently on a telephone will only be able to receive and do not provide feedback or public comments. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call the joint meeting, special meeting of the City Council and the Site in Architectural Commission to order at 6:01 PM. May we have a roll call, please, starting with the City Council?
Councilmember Turner, here. Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Alahi.
Present.
Vice Mayor Wilshimer.
Present.
Mayor Maitrej.
Present.
Commissioner Bala Sumarayen, absent. Commissioner Sivak, Sir Vasdeva, is absent. Commissioner Kholi.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Present.
And Chair Dylard.
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Thank you to everyone for making it here. I know that having a joint special meeting is difficult to get every, to get a quorum, so thank you for making it. We have only one item under new business, and it is to provide direction to staff on SB9 ordinance modifications. And before I ask for a staff report, I just want to explain how we're going to do this. We're going to have the staff report, and then we'll have Site in Architecture, the Site in Architectural Commissioners ask questions of staff. And then when they're done, we'll have City Council ask questions. And then we'll open public comment. And then after that, we'll bring it back for deliberations, and the deliberations will be all of us that are here in the room, being the, the joint City Council and Site in Architectural Commission. And then we'll give, on seeking a consensus, we'll then give direction to staff. So that's, that's what we're going to do, and we will start with the staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Chairman and Commissioners, from IM, Mayor Perkins, and City Planner. So SB9 is a state law that went into effect last year. SB9 has two parts. First is the ministerial approval, which is required for up to two housing units on a single-family lot. For existing lots, that means that up to four dwelling units are now allowed, and that is the main house and the SB9 unit, as well as an ADU and a JADU. The second part of SB9 is that all single-family zoning lots can be subdivided into two lots. The state law requires that SB9 projects be reviewed ministerially, which means that no discretion can be used when reviewing a project, and that only objective zoning standards can be allowed. This is in contrast to the more traditional discretionary review process, where development projects are reviewed at a public hearing, and input from the public can be provided before a decision is made. So when the City Council adopted the current SB9 ordinance, and it was effective in January 2022, at the same time that the state law was effective, the local ordinance limits any new building constructed under the SB9 regulations to 800 square feet in size, which is the state mandated minimum building size. Our local ordinance also requires that lots created through an SB9 urban lot split also be constructed under the SB9 requirements. So currently, discretionary review process is not permitted for lots that are created through SB9. And lastly, in accordance with the state law, our local ordinance allows only two units to be constructed on a lot that is created through an SB9 split, rather than the four units that are allowed for other single-family lots. There are a few reasons why we're here tonight to consider changes to the local requirements for SB9. First is the updated housing element. The City Council has directed staff to include SB9 projects in the number of planned new units that are planned in order to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation. This has allowed the city to submit a plan to the state to meet our REA requirements without having to use multifamily. If multifamily housing is used to meet the REA requirements, a minimum density of 20 gillon units per acre is required. For reference, the Hoxee Endo site is the only multifamily zone site in the city currently, and that is at a density of about 7 units an acre. Staff is not aware of another city that has been able to submit a plan that, to meet the REA requirements, without the use of multifamily zoning. Therefore, a productive SB9 program is uniquely important for Monterino. It should be noted, though, as part of the housing element, other less dense multifamily zoning is still required, and that is being worked on by the City Council as a separate issue, but just wanted to clarify that there is still some multifamily zoning required. The second reason for considering changes to the SB9 ordinance is due to interest that has been received from Monterino residents. Staff has been contacted by many property owners in the city wanting to split their existing property into two lots for a variety of reasons. However, the current 800 square foot building size limit has been a deterrent for potential SB9 projects. And lastly, interpretations from HCD has, have been provided to the city. And these are letters that HCD had sent to other communities who have a similar, or had a similar 800 square foot building size limit, and those letters are included in Attachment 6 to the staff report. In these letters, HCD has noted to two specific jurisdictions that the building size limit that they, of 800 square feet is a reduction in intensity of land use when compared with the zoning district development standard, and that is a violation of the Housing Price Act of 2019. HCD has required these jurisdictions to eliminate their 800 square foot building size limit and allow SB9 projects to build at the same size that's allowed by the regular zoning district standards. So because of the need to meet our REA requirements for the housing element, and HCD's interpretation of the Housing Price Act of 2019, staff recommends that the municipal code be revised to remove the 800 square foot building size limit for SB9 projects and allow the same building size for a one-story house that is currently allowed in the zoning district. And we will have, towards the end of the presentation, a few examples of what that would look like on some potential lots lists. Second recommendation is that building height be limited essentially to one story. As SB9 projects aren't ministerial and do not allow for discretionary review process, staff recommends that the building height of an SB9 project be limited to one story. This recommendation is made because one-story buildings have a significantly less impact on neighboring properties than a two-story building can. This would be accomplished by limiting the height of an SB9 project to the same height that is allowed for a one-story building in the zoning district. And that currently is 16 feet at the required front side or rear yard setback, and then up to 21 feet total is what the current zoning allows for a one-story building. Except for an SB9 project, the state does allow SB9 buildings to have a four-foot side yard and a four-foot rear yard setback, which is similar to the ADU regulations. And so staff is recommending that if a building were constructed with a statement of setbacks of four feet, that the building height be limited to 14 feet at least. And another opportunity to assist us in meeting the city's REA requirements, but still maintaining the character of Monterino, would be to require two residential units be constructed on a vacant lot that was created through an SB9 urban lot split or an existing vacant lot that proposes an SB9 residential development. The first one in uniform that would be approved for construction would be equal to the size and height allowed for an ADU or a JADU in the applicable zoning district. The second unit would be the main house and would be the size that is allowed by the applicable zoning district. This would result in a main house and an ADU-sized unit, which has become common in Monterino. The ADU-sized unit will assist the city in giving not only the REA members, but also the affordability requirements for new housing units. The fourth recommendation is to remove a current requirement in the zoning code that governs the size of covered porches. The current SB9 standards limit the size of covered porches to 150 square feet in total, and at least one-third of the area would need to be provided at the front of the dwelling unit. And this requirement was designed in keeping, to keep the covered porch areas in scale within an 800 square foot building. Staff recommends removing this limitation on the allowable square footage for covered porches for SB9 projects. If the building size increased beyond the 800 square feet, there would be a concern about keeping in scale with a small building. And also, covered porch areas are included in the overall structural coverage and impervious coverage allowances, which would also serve to limit these areas. And the next recommendation can be a little complicated, so I won't read it into there. I will explain the difference between the actual zoning district and what the code calls the effective zoning district. So the municipal code currently includes a provision that if a lot size of a particular parcel is closer to the minimum lot area required by a different zoning district, then the development standards of that other zoning district are applicable. So for example, if a property is zone R144, which is generally a one-acre lot size, but the actual lot size of a property is closer to half an acre, the development standards of the R120 zoning district would apply to that lot. So as another example with applicable to SB9, if an existing one-acre lot, an existing one-acre lot would be allowed to have 30% of the lot area covered by buildings and other impervious areas such as pools, driveways, or walkways. If that one-acre lot were split into two lots under SB9, each of the two lots would be approximately a half an acre in size and would then be subject to the R120 zoning district standards, which would allow 40% of the lot covered in impervious area. So the current requirement for SB9 projects is that a lot that is split under SB9 would maintain the lower impervious coverage of the actual zoning district, rather than the effective zoning district. Staff does recommend revising this requirement to apply the effective zoning district, which is the standard for non-SB9 lots throughout the city. Although this will result in an increase in overall impervious coverage, the city's stormwater regulation would still ensure that stormwater is retained and allowed to infiltrate on the site. And more detailed information about the current stormwater regulations are detailed in the staff report. The other reason that staff recommend eliminating this requirement means that a unique development standard on a lot-by-lot basis can be cumbersome and time-consuming to manage administratively, and would would also reduce the amount of general information that we're able to provide online, as each lot may have different development standards that would require our customers to contact the city for information, rather than being able to obtain information online. And the next recommendation is to remove another requirement that is specific to SB9 projects. The current municipal code requires that the distance between two buildings on the same lot for an SB9 project be 10 feet. The standard zoning regulation is 6 feet between buildings. So in order to provide consistency with the existing code standards, staff recommends that the difference between buildings on the same lot for an SB9 project be revised to match the requirements of the existing zoning code, which is 6. The municipal code does not currently have requirements for the maximum number of driveway curb cuts that are allowed for a parcel. The number and distance of curb cuts is currently reviewed by the city engineer as part of the discretionary review process when site development permanent application is received. However, SB9 standards are required to be ministerial and do not allow for discretionary review. So therefore, in order to maintain the streetcape character of Monterino, staff recommends that only one driveway curb cut be allowed on SB9 projects where the original lot front inch is a minimum of 80, sorry, is less than 80 contiguous feet. In these cases, the two new lots that would be created for the two new houses, or the new houses, I should say, under SB9 would be required to share a single driveway entrance from the street. Existing parcels with a street footage of 80 contiguous feet or more would be able to have a new driveway from the street. Under the current requirements, if a property owner were to complete an urban lot split, the two new lots are restricted, so that development of any new dwelling units would be subject to the SB9 residential development requirements. There is not currently allowed a discretionary review process for construction on SB9-created lots. Staff recommends revising this requirement to allow property owners to choose whether they would like to build a new house under the SB9 regulations, which according to, or in accordance with the recommendations by staff, would be essentially a one-story building, or a property owner would have the option of applying for a site development permit through the discretionary review process, which would be a public hearing and a decision made by the Site in Architectural Commission. This would treat lots created through an urban lot split the same as others that they want to visit in the city, and would also provide for public notification and allow for public comments on proposed projects that exceed the SB9 development standards. And here is the last recommendation. The current SB9 regulations require that two notices of a project be provided to property owners and residents within 600 feet of the project site. Other projects that require a public hearing have one neighborhood notice, and it is to properties within 300 feet of the site. When the SB9 regulations were being originally considered, there was a concern that a 300-foot notice limit does not provide sufficient noticing to surrounding property owners, particularly in the areas with one acre or larger lots. Attachment 8 to the staff report includes a few examples of noticing areas for recent public hearing projects that are on one acre or larger lots. The 300-foot radius provides noticing for approximately two lots from the subject site, so all local lots, obviously adjacent to the site, as well as one additional lot further away. Staff believes that the current noticing requirements for public hearing projects would also be sufficient for SB9 projects. Presentation. Here we go. So this is an attachment in the staff report, but we did add it to the presentation here also, and it just provides a summary of the differences between the, or includes the current SB9 regulation in Monterino, as well as the regulations for Los Gatos and Saratoga. And the last comment, last column includes the recommendations that staff is presenting tonight. Part of the recommendations that staff put together tonight was looking at the requirements of our neighboring cities and trying to align with those where possible. And the, I would say the, one of the differences is, well, I'll say two of the differences, is that Los Gatos allows two-story buildings to be constructed under the SB9 regulations. And also, both Los Gatos and Saratoga allow a 16-foot tall building when located within the zoning district to acquire setbacks, where the staff recommendation is to reduce that height to 14 feet in an effort to encourage projects to meet the standard zoning district setbacks, rather than the reduced setbacks allowed by SB9. And then we do have a few examples of what the development capacity would be for some sample lot split projects based on the staff recommendations. And so this actually is a lot split, the one and only that we've ever seen as an application for an SB9 lot split. The property fronts at the bottom of the screen is Island Avenue. It is an existing one-acre lot, which could have a 6,600 square foot house, a 1,200 square foot ADU, a JADU, and an 800 square foot SB9 unit. So that is what is currently allowed on any, those types of units are currently allowed on any single-family lot in the city. With the proposed subdivision and the staff recommendations, the, each of the two parcels would be approximately half an acre in size, and each would be required to construct a maximum 1,000 square foot dwelling unit as the first unit. And then the second unit could be a maximum of 4,950 square feet, which is in line with the zoning district, I'm sorry, the zoning code requirements for a half an acre parcel. And then this next sample is similar lot sizes and similar allowing building sizes. This sample would be more of a flag lot configuration for the SB9 project as this parcel fronts on Justland Street. And then here is an example, this is not an application in Monterino, but if it were, it is on a slightly smaller, well, quite a bit smaller lot. This is an original 12,000 square foot lot. Again, every single-family lot is allowed to currently have up to four dwelling units. If a lot split were submitted in Monterino, the staff recommendations would allow for the parcel one to have an 800 square foot unit for the first unit built, and that 800 square feet is the minimum allowed by the state. The second unit on each of these parcels would be limited by the structural coverage limit of 40%, rather than the allowed building size of 3,300 square feet. And this is to demonstrate that on smaller lots, there are other zoning code standards that will govern to more proportionally keep the building size in, in size with the, with the size of the lot. And this last one is a bit of a more extreme example of a small lot, and this would be an original 8,000 square foot lot. And if it were split using SB9, the resulting parcels would be only 4,800 square feet and 3,200 square feet. So again, through our typical zoning code standards, the main house built under these lots would be limited by the structural coverage to 1,000, about 1,900 square feet for the larger of the two parcels, and just under 1,300 square feet for the smaller of the two parcels. And so at tonight's meeting, councilmembers and commissioners have three options. You can direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the changes. And if that is the case, the schedule for that would bring a draft ordinance to the Site in Architectural Commission on October 4, and they would be making the recommendation on the draft ordinance to the City Council. And then the City Council introduction and adoption of such ordinance would occur on October 17 and November 7. The ordinance would be effective 30 days after the adoption, which would be December 7. Another option is the councilmembers and commissioners can direct staff to prepare an ordinance with other modifications to the SB9 regulations that are recommended by staff tonight. And of course, no action can be taken. And that completes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So what we'll do is take questions from the Site in Architectural Commissioners, and then when they're done, we will have questions from the City Council. He would like to ask a question.
That's your question.
There you go.
I don't have any questions.
I, I raised this few outside of the meeting, but I'll raise it so that everyone can hear. I had a question initially about what happens if you have a one-acre lot with a 6,600 square foot home, let's say, on one side of that acre. What happens if the lot is split? With how many feet would be allowed under this recommendation on the new half-acre parcel? Knowing that you already have 6,600 on the initial parcel.
So the staff recommendation would be to treat the new lots created through SB9 the same as other lots throughout the city. So assuming the vacant lot would be approximately a couple acre in size, it would be allowed a house, a main house of up to 4,950 square feet, and would also be required to construct the ADU-sized unit of up to 1,000 square feet. Or actually, I take that back, that would be an option. The property owner could also construct a JADU as part of the main house.
So what would that be total square footage? I should have done the math. It'd be
11,515, 15, 15.
On the acre.
On the acre.
And is there a way, that's a lot of house. Is there a way that we could somehow define our new parcels in reference to the original parcel and whether it's already had, whether it already has a large structure on it?
So I will ask the city attorney if she has anything to add, but the staff recommendations were designed to be in line with HCD's interpretation, which is that project or parcels created through SB9 should have the same development potential as allowed by the standards of a district. Should have the same um development potential as allowed by the standards of a district. So um that is a staff recommendation. There's a potential to change that.
So we believe that that would, if we did do something like that, that would potentially put the city's ordinance at risk. Because it is decreasing the intensity of development that would be allowed on the newly created lot. So that is why it's staff recommending that we not do that.
Do Saratoga and Los Altos Hills. Have a different approach? Where there is proportional consideration.
Very likely.
So um yes, the city of Saratoga um allows the. Square footage of a new building on SB nine lot. To be um proportional to the size that lot is to the full original lot. So for example, if it was a one-acre lot. That was split, um so one lot was sixty percent of the total and the other lot was forty percent of the total. In Saratoga, the lot that was sixty percent would be allowed to build sixty percent of the maximum building size. Um that was allowed. In um Los Altos Hills, I believe they allow the um full. Um building size to be permitted, but to be split between two units.
Thank you.
Just to further clarify, one of the issues that is somewhat unique to Monterrey now is that we are using SB nine in order to meet our arena numbers. And so that puts additional requirements um on us regarding the intensity of use. And um trying to encourage the actual development of these sites. So other cities aren't using it for the arena number allocation necessarily. And so they don't have um the additional pressure to try to incentivize people to develop a site. As proposed in how you know.
My people have an incentive to develop, it seems like we're. We started out with eight-hundred square feet. And now we're in some cases going to. I suppose on some of these acre-and-a-half lots, you you could have one that's almost an acre and one that's a half acre. So we're, we started out with eight-hundred square feet. For a new structure and now we could have sixty-six-hundred square feet for a new structure. Is there some square footage in between eight-hundred and sixty-six-hundred that developers and homeowners? Might find economically viable? I think that's the question we need to answer tonight.
Um I. Can't say, I think some of the members of the public can probably see to that, that there are specific projects. But I do think that's um the direction that we're looking for from the council and commissioners tonight.
Any further questions? Questions?
Uh this kind of clarification, um. To make it simple enough. On an acre lot. Without an urban lot split, how big of an ADU can be built?
Twelve hundred square feet.
And then to order to get more, you're required to split the lot.
Not for the ADU, so. A one-acre lot could currently have a sixty-six-hundred-square-foot main house. Twelve-hundred-square-foot ADU. A JADU. Of which that square footage is part of the main house, so that is not additional square footage. Um and the lot could have an eight-hundred-square-foot. Um SB nine unit.
My concern is that I think. That a twelve-hundred-foot ADU. Is a size that might not be completely economic. To the home, to the property owner. Because you're building a twelve-hundred square feet.
If I could interrupt just for a moment, at this point, what we'd like to do is ask questions of staff before we make comments and deliberations. So so long as you're going to a question, that's okay.
I'll be back.
Because I'd like to take, we'd like to clarify how we're understanding and then open it to the public. That that's why I'm sorry.
No, I understand, thank you. Um the other, the last thing is. All these SB nine units. And all the things that happen through this require deep restrictions, true or false?
Um they, there are a couple of requirements um in the SB nine legislation that. Um a property owner reside in one of the units um on the property for three years. And um how we would currently handle that situation is a signed affidavit. From the property owner, we wouldn't actually look for that.
Account we have split.
Uh if we can hold your comments, please.
So there are no deep restrictions required in any circumstance beyond the affidavit?
No. No.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question. Is the state's goal to create more large expensive housing or just more housing period, more front doors?
So I I believe the state. The state's goal is both, um I believe that SB nine um regulations are intended simply to allow more units. Um to be constructed. However, through the staff recommendation, um that requires the ADU-sized unit to also be built. Um that will. Help us out significantly in beating the affordability requirements um required of the house. For new events also.
Going back to the affidavit question, what remedies does the city have if the owner doesn't reside there for three years?
How many, um especially in this situation, it's it's a ministerial. Project so that we don't put conditions on it. Um the only thing we could conceivably try to enforce the affidavit, but I think it's unlikely that anybody would. If someone else, um.
And undo the lot split.
You would not undo the lot split, no, the remedy would be to get them to move back in for three years.
But that's not gonna happen. Thank you.
Other questions, site and architecture commissioners? No? So I'll bring it over to council and I'll start by asking a few questions. A lot of people here know ministerial review, but I've had a number of phone calls from other people. Could you just explain ministerial uh approval, review and approval? And is that, and my second question, is that like it's done over the counter? Can you just explain, please?
So the ministerial review process requires um only objective standards to uh be used. So there is no subjective um or design criteria um that is allowed. These, um we have been, or our SB nine requirements would process um applications at a staff level. Um so staff would verify that on the objective standards of the state laws as well as our municipal code are met for a project. And if they are met, the project is required to be approved. The more typical or in what most people are more used to is a discretionary review process. Which um allows for a public comment and public input. And at a public hearing where a the commission or the city council would take the um public input into account. Um when making a decision on the project.
Follow-on question, are story pools required for ministerial approval?
Not currently.
Okay.
Not currently.
Uh next question, you mentioned forty-sixty lot split. Can you explain that relative to what the state is asking uh all municipalities to do?
Yes, um so the state on SB nine regulations. Require that when an urban lot split is completed. That the two lots created be approximately equal in size. With um the smaller, the smallest lot being forty percent of the original lot area. And the largest lot being a maximum of sixty percent of the original lot area. So a lot could be split equally so that the two new lots are equal in size. Um it could be split so. The lot areas are fifty-five percent and forty-five percent of the original lot size. Or sixty percent and forty percent is the maximum difference allowed.
Following question is that. Uh does the existing house have to be on the larger lot or does it not matter?
Our current regulations um does not regulate that, so it wouldn't be required under. The current regulations. Um or the staff recommendations, but because our zoning code um. Allows a s- a flat, sort of a set lot size based on the zoning district. It wouldn't, in many cases, it would likely not matter. In that um the same lot size would still be allowed whether the lot were forty percent or sixty per, the vacant lot were forty percent or sixty percent of the total area.
Okay, you mentioned uh you compared the current and the proposed Monterrey Sereno. Uh SB nine regulations to both Los Gatos and Saratoga. Do you have any, any information anecdotal or otherwise on their take-up rate, like are, is, is? Are are residents of Saratoga and Los Gatos uh applying for these lot splits?
Um I know, I should say, the last I heard in Los Gatos, which was. Maybe about six or eight weeks ago, um they had over twenty um total SB nine applications. And that is a combination of both lot splits as well as residential holders. And with your, with likely more now.
Okay, um my final question, but I never like to say final. I had heard recently that the uh finance department, California Finance has adjusted their. Population projections for the state of California downward significantly. Uh are you familiar with the revised population uh numbers, projections? And then following that. Do you think that anything will change with uh HCD with those new uh population numbers, projections?
Um my limited familiarity with a population projection, if that they've gone down. Um I do not know um the the specific um projected decreases. That will not have an effect on this cycle of the housing element as the arena allocations have been determined. Um probably now a year and a half, two years ago. Um if the, that trend continues, it presumably would affect the um arena allocations for the next housing element cycle.
Thank you, those are my first round of questions, uh other council members, would you like to ask questions?
Um some of my questions were already answered, uh I have a few left. They say that the the first unit built has to be an ADU. Um what does that, if you have to be finished and proved inspected before you can break ground on the main house on that split lot?
Um I think what we would be looking for is um either concurrent building permits in the middle and concurrent construction. Or if um the units would be built in sequence at the smaller unit, you'd be permitted first. But concurrent with.
My uh second question is about splitting an R one eight lot. Um which could be as small as eight thousand square feet or even a little smaller. So you could end up with two lots that are four thousand square feet. And one of them even smaller than that, what would be the rules for those very small, let's call them R one four lots?
So if it's possible to put up a presentation here. Right, and then on slide nineteen. So um this is the example, so if there were an eight-thousand-square-foot lot that wanted to split under SB nine. Um the larger of the two lots could be a maximum of forty-eight-hundred square feet. Um that is sixty percent of the eight thousand. Um and then that would result in the smaller lot being thirty-two-hundred square feet. And although um. The the building size allowed by the zoning code would still save thirty-three-hundred square feet. Projects do need to comply with all development standards. And so in this case, um the structural coverage limits. Would be on what would govern the maximum house size of the main house, so on. The parcel one is as an example of forty-eight-hundred square feet. The structural coverage of forty percent would allow a house of one thousand nine hundred twenty square feet. And on the smaller of the two parcels of thirty-two-hundred square feet. Um that structural coverage would limit the house to one thousand two hundred eighty square feet. And then of course, the eight-hundred square foot of the first unit, um the eight-hundred is the state mandated. For the second unit.
Or the sort of situation would change if there already is a house very likely on that lot. Which could be bigger than nineteen hundred and twenty square feet.
Correct, then that um would remain, that could remain. Um it's fairly unlikely on an eight-thousand-square-foot lot. That you could split the lot without um with maintaining the existing house just because of the size of the lot, but. Um if that did happen, or even on larger lots, if the existing house were to remain. Um and be. Larger than what um would then be allowed on the new. Um lot that was created, the house would be considered a legal non-conforming structure. Um it could remain and it could be remodeled and repaired. Um but if it were to be torn down, then a new house would need to comply with the standards for the new lots.
Yeah, this is probably an extreme example, which we may never want to. Thank you.
More questions, no? Council member Craig. If a lot is situated um. In a configuration where the house would not allow a. Equitable split and even getting a sixty-forty split might be difficult, what would be? The procedures to try to make that happen?
So the newly created lot lines. I should say, the existing. House and the new property lines would not need to be set to comply with the setback requirements. So the SB nine, I don't know, state legislation. Um does not allow a city to um deny. A lot split application if the new lot line would result in the existing property not needing the setback requirements. So there is a little more um. Leeway for an existing house in that regard. But if the split could not happen. The we, property owner could demolish the house and then do the lot split and build under the requirements for the new ones.
But if they wanted to keep the house. They would probably have a hard time doing the lot split then.
And probably on the smaller lots with.
Okay, and then you said something earlier, and I wasn't sure, do you have to have? Does it have to go first house ADU, then you can do an SB nine, or can you have a single, a single unit? Do the SB nine split and then put a second house on on the newly created parcel?
So any existing house. Most likely here, in many cases, the existing house could remain, so yes, you could build a new house on an existing single lot. And then subdivide the lot on using SB nine. And then the vacant. Lot would be required to build um the ADU-sized unit. And then could be allowed to also build the main house. And then could be allowed to also build the main house.
Okay, but you could also just have a lot with a single residence on it. Do an SB nine split, and put another resident on the back end, and call it finished.
The existing, um, the lot with, the new lot with the existing house. Could remain. But any development on the second lot, which presumably would fit, is vacant. Would require, under the staff recommendation, would require the two units to be built, the ADU sized unit. And then the main house. Um, and that is intended to help us meet our arena requirements for new. The number of new housing, as well, um, as the smaller unit. Um, helps us towards the affordability requirements of the housing elements.
Okay, and that will. Be okay by HCD to do it that way?
Um, we believe so, um, Los Gatos has this requirement.
Okay. Councilmember Turner, do you have some question?
Uh, yes, I do. I wanted to verify that HCD has actually approved SB nine units for arena numbers.
Is that true? So our current submittal, um, to HCD has, was submitted about a month ago, our current, um, home element version. And that does include, um, SB nine units, um. For projects where, um, either an application has been submitted. Or where property owners have given us a written intention to construct, um. Or to develop their lot with an SB nine project. Assuming, or on the condition that the eight hundred square foot building size be increased. So the written intentions from property owners. Is one of the criteria that HCD looks to win, um, to allow. Um, the number of units that you're projecting. So it's sort of similar to what we had done for our ADUs with owner intentions, so we have not heard back from HCD. But we have, um. We do believe that that will satisfy their requirements.
Okay, so at this point in time, it hasn't been approved yet.
Correct, or how the government has not been approved.
Okay. So, um. The lot splits, right? We have two instances, a sixty forty and a fifty fifty. And those are the only two that they have approved, so, right?
Or anything between that, or any, or anything between that, correct.
Um. The residency requirement. Uh, is, is three years. Um. Are we gonna be able to re, to enforce some residency requirements?
We want to run this.
Okay. Uh. I think I have all my, my questions answered.
Councilmember Locky.
I, I, I really appreciate your question, and a question from, uh. Commissioner Zidler, on the side, because it, it really is, uh. I mean, as much as, uh, this, this is probably the most important decision we're all gonna make, is, is this a question or a comment?
Okay.
Take me to a question. No question about that.
I'm just saying, this is really one of the most important decisions we're gonna be making as councilor, as commissioners, it's gonna affect, uh. Uh, how much your looks and fees. So, so, so the question that was asked was basically, can we do something about building sizes when you have one lot? Which got the benefit of being an acre. And so you put a six thousand square foot building on it, now you split it, now it's really a half an acre. And should only get four thousand square feet, or whatever that number is. So, i- is there a way where we can do a subtraction, so if, if the one lot? Is above what its new zoning allowed it? Then that comes off, uh, that, that size has to be deducted from the second lot, the main allowance. I doubt you, that's what you were getting to, well, maybe not quite that, but that might be, we're thinking about it, is there issue with that?
There could be. So, um, the concern is the requirements of SB nine. And the requirements of SB three thirty that prohibit reducing the intensity of development, and so the question is, if you, if you limit. The size of a unit on our, what turns into an R one twenty, if you limit that based on the existence of the. Home on the other lot, so the existing home, um, that you are in some ways reducing the intensity of development on that site.
Okay, so it's, it's possible that could be an issue, but on the other hand. You are still getting it the entire intensity that's required, if you count on them both. The second question I was gonna get to, which had to do with, can you get them to stay, stay there for three years? Uh, is there, is there a reason why we can't put that in a deed, or make some kind of a deed that basically they sign and we recall? Is that not?
Well, we can, um. Previously, many, many years ago, you had a similar requirement for, um, accessory dwelling units. And so it is something that can be required, um, enforceability is just another issue.
Right, but at least again. The title company is being forced, they're settled with that kind of it, so they might be working on. Uh, the other question, uh, uh, Vice Mayor. Raised on a smaller unit. Uh, that eight thousand square foot, uh, lot. If there's already an existing thirty-two hundred square foot building on that. And then they can put another eight hundred ADU on it, put ADU, and then on the new one, they can put another twelve hundred square foot. Uh, is, is there a minimum ADU requirement, I mean, do we have to say the ADU has to be eight hundred square foot? And, and obviously for two reasons. Uh, one is, uh, on, you know. Do we require it to be eight hundred, at least, or not? And, and, and the second reason I'm asking the question is, when somebody does a lot split, we're requiring them to build an ADU, what about if they build a two hundred square foot ADU? Is there a requirement, a limitation you can put on that also, so? And that it must be at least a certain size.
So the eight hundred square feet is the minimum, the state mandated minimum for an ADU. So the state mandates that we allow at least eight hundred square feet. Um, a property owner could choose to build less. But, um, that is our, um, mandated minimum that we can allow. Or that we can. That we have to allow, I should say. Um, and then. There is, the only minimum size of an ADU would be, um. A building that is compliant, um, with the building code, the building code does have minimum sizes for. A living room, a bedroom, a kitchen, so as long as those were met. You could have quite a small, probably. One hundred fifty, two hundred square foot unit, and still comply, and so there is no, um. Minimum that we require.
So, so what I'm trying to get to is, can we require a minimum size? Well, obviously, you, you know, say, okay, if you're gonna build it. Uh, we, 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 we can't tell you not to build less than eight hundred square feet. But if you wanna build less than eight hundred under these conditions, you know, given the size of the lot. It must be at least eight hundred or a thousand, or whatever works, because otherwise it doesn't do the job with providing portable housing, which is what we're trying to do.
So, yes, um, the, the code could require a minimum, um, size for an ADU, a minimum square footage. When we are counting the number of units, um, new units that are created, to report, um. Our compliance, um, our annual compliance with the housing element. Unit size that doesn't really matter, should have been.
All right, clear my questions, thank you.
May I ask one?
Yes, you may.
Um. Parking requirements. Can you please speak to the parking requirements of an ADU, a JADU? And the main house?
Yes, there's always a minute. So, um, I believe you, because I'm just verifying this.
We're doing all parking in the streets.
So for an ADU. Um. A minimum of one parking space is required. Except for, um, a project that is within half a mile of. Um, a high quality public transit, which, um, is brought by Montesereno. Or if the property is in a historic district. Or if the property is within one block of a car share vehicle, which I'm also not aware of, um, applying in Montesereno. The other exclusion, um, from the one parking space would be for, um. For example, an existing garage that is converted to an EDU, those parking spaces do not need to be replaced. So no parking space. Under those specific conditions, no additional parking space is required for, um, an ADU. Okay. Um, SB nine projects. I do not believe there. There is one parking space required unless, um, similar requirements, the project is within half a mile of. High quality public transit, or within one block of a car share vehicle. Again, I don't believe either of those requirements, um, apply in Montesereno, so one off-street, um, parking space is required for SB nine. Um, for both ADUs and SB nine projects, the parking space can be uncovered. So it doesn't have to be in a closed garage or carport space, it can be just a, a surface parking area.
Thank you.
Other questions? No? Well, at this point in time, what I'd like to do is open it for public comment, and how many people do we have, uh, who is the appearing remotely?
Nobody's raised their hands so far.
I understood, I'd like, is it six, eight, ten?
Uh, five.
Five, okay, so. What I'd like to do is, uh, if you're here in chambers. Uh, please approach the podium, and you can fill out a card where you can come up in whatever order, um. And. And I think we'll take everyone that's here in chambers, and then we'll take remote participation. So.
My question, you'll support it, former mayor Lawler. That wasn't raised, uh, what, I was on the site in architectural, and one of the things we always looked at with staff was. Slope, because we have a lot of hillside property. And if the minimum lot split is sixty forty. Uh, my, you know, uh, lots that are already built, uh, hills like mine, and several of my neighbors. We put the house on basically the only building site on this hillside, they, uh, thing. And so if you carved off, uh, the required forty percent. You'd have a slope on which you could not build a structure, but, uh. But when I heard this is all ministerial. How, how does that work? Uh, because again, in Montesereno, there are. Uh, a lot of lots where, even though one acre lots. There's really only one building site, and so, anyway, uh, that's my question, I'm just curious how that would be handled, thank you so much.
Okay. We'll handle all the questions at the end, this is for a pub, public comment. Uh, and I forgot to say that, that, uh, there's three, everyone will have three minutes. Uh. Anyone else, if you'd like to speak, please approach the podium. Where Mayor Lawler?
Hello, good evening, council members and commissioners. Um, as a former council member and mayor, I completely appreciate the position you're in to, um, protect the peaceful and rural feel of Montesereno for our residents. In fact, we do not have a housing crisis, we have an affordable housing crisis, as, 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 as Councilmember Locky had mentioned. And this is a direct result of existing regulations. So SB nine does not on its face achieve affordable housing. Rather, it benefits developers, no disrespect, Mr. James. Unless we stipulate the homes on an urban lot split are of the size to be truly affordable, we are looking at the McMansionizing of Montesereno. Further, SB nine's constitutionality is being challenged right now. There are lawsuits and a ballot initiative on the state, on the state ballot in twenty twenty-four. Therefore, we should tread carefully when it comes to our SB nine projects. Rolling over and relaxing all restrictions could and will lead to development that cannot be reversed if these challenges prevail. Take this scenario that Commissioner Zidler had brought up. A developer purchases, purchases an R one forty-four lot. Tears down the original rancher, then builds. A, a six thousand square foot, or max out the square footage on the new home, then this developer proceeds with an urban lot split. Now, the, now the new structure is a legal non-conforming structure, being far in excess of coverage allowed for the resulting R one twenty. The second R one twenty can have around forty-five hundred square feet of coverage. The developer builds this and an ADU, and now you have close to over twelve thousand square feet of structural coverage on a lot that was originally. Zoned for six thousand square feet. This is a likely scenario, and because of that. It is imperative to build some kind of guardrails within our SB nine regulations to prevent excessive structural coverage. Now, I acknowledge and agree, these projects would help our city reach H, HCD's arbitrary goals. Um, for, for our city, and I think we can reach those goals and protect our city from unfettered overdevelopment. On our lots, by doing the following suggestions, or at least considering these. One, in a lot split, we, we do use the sixty forty percentage for coverages on the resulting or effective lots. In which the non-conforming structure must be on the larger parcel. Therefore, reducing the overall structural coverage on lot number two. Two, specifically stating in our SB nine regulations that the maximum structural coverage of the resulting lot. Includes both the main structure and the ADU required by the city. Another idea, as mentioned, was remain, is incentivized, incentivized remaining within the zoning setbacks. And then third, with respect to an empty lot split, aligning square footage on a ratio basis and or stipulating maximum combined square footage of the two structures on each lot. Would also reduce the impact of McMansion as, McMansion nineteen and, uh, of our city, and help us protect community character. This shouldn't be a problem for developers, since square footage technically can be added simultaneously. Depending on the lot, as evidenced by a project that I will not name from a few years ago. One last thing, it's important to note that HCD does not care about the size of the units, but the quantity. And smaller units are more affordable, so reaching a structural coverage number that accomplishes, yeah. That accomplishes more affordable housing units satisfies HCD and protects our community is a win for all of us, thanks.
Would anyone else in chambers like to speak? So, uh, I would like to open it to those participating remotely. If you are participating remotely and you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. No?
Yeah, before I stop, by three minutes, I'd like to say I am not a developer, I have not built any spec houses in Montesereno.
You could have spoken, speak to council, please.
I apologize.
Okay, um. Wow. I sent you a. Uh, some discussion points. I also sent some suggestions as to how I think the. Staff recommendation should be modified, if you look at the thing that I sent. You look at the back of those, there are minor modifications to the nine points that I think are critical. To make it better for Montesereno. If you accept the ones that staff is recommending as a developer. Sure, go for it, but I think you need to protect Montesereno. Number one is, look very carefully at one A, B, and A and B. Um, it's. Three thousand, forty-five hundred, and six thousand are your baseline square footages, there's a ten percent bonus for building a one-story house. That bonus is critical. We could apply that bonus on SB nine by saying, hey, if you wanna keep your bonus. Keep it, keep conventional setbacks, don't go for the four feet. So, look at one, that's what I intended one to be all about. Um. Three, um, item three. Um, the state. On SB nine allows one or two units, you cannot require two units. Um, so, what I think you have to modify this to say is, if you in Montesereno. Want to have ADUs, then the first unit has to be an ADU, the second unit can be conventional size. That means, if you want one unit, you build an ADU, if you want two units, you have to build an ADU first. Um, seven, um, flag lots, you need to talk about frontage. Frontage of a flag lot on the back half. Frontage of a flag lot on the back half doesn't make sense. Um others own other cities have changed that to be the same as the side setback. So um typically you want frontage to be distance away from a street when you're a flag lot. That doesn't matter. I've got forty two seconds left. Wow. Um. I think uh item ten is what I would add. If you've got, if you're splitting lots and you create lots at less than six thousand feet, require only. Two eight hundred square foot units. Um. I could talk for twenty minutes, but. Um boy, thank you. You've got any questions? Go ahead. Um. These, I think, improve. For Montesreno. Um. Not for developers, the recommendations made by staff. So please look seriously at them. And I think the comments at the bottom, one, two, three, four and five. Uh look at what I think it improves. I think it'll help. Um. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Jean, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Um staff put forward some recommendations and. You've got, I I think they include some of what. What you've addressed here and some that are not. Uh and you know where we were before. The city of Montesreno and you're seeing what staff is recommending today. Could you live with what they're recommending today, or is that a hard no?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, but I've taken what they're recommending. This back page, everything they say is in black. I've added the red. Because I think you need to tighten it up. I think. You need to take the fact that SB nine does not allow, does not require parking. So in your square footage, take four hundred and fifty feet, take it out of the allowable size of a house. Take it away from a developer, take it away from a homeowner and say, if you're not building a garage. You get four hundred and fifty feet square, square feet less. If you want to build a garage. There's your four hundred and fifty feet. These are things that I think you need to add in. If you don't add those in. You'll be maxing out housing without providing parking. So. I've tried in that list to look at the things that I think. Uh staff is. Staff's done a heck of a lot of work. But I think there are nuances that can be improved. Just by tweaking it, and I want stuff to go to site and architecture committee. I want the site and architecture committee to look at things. So if you give the. Um if you give the incentive for someone to do something a little bit different, if they want to do something. Like. Um. Uh put two driveways. In an eighty foot. Frontage, you're saying if you've got less than eighty feet of frontage, you can only have one driveway. If you need two. You've got to go to site and architecture. Go to site and architecture. Say, look, I need to get to my flag lot at the back. My driveway is on the other side. I can't live with one. So you go to site and architecture. That's the way around it, or you just say on flag lots. Allow it because flag lots probably need another driveway. So. These red, the things that I put in red are not to help developers, they're to help the city of Montesreno. I live in Montesreno. I will take everything staff is recommending in black. And run with it. As a developer, but I as a Montesreno resident, please take the red stuff. Okay, thank you.
So we do have someone who's raised their hand um. Uh. It's your. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Cool, thank you. Hi, everybody. This is Kruish Benham. I live on a one eight four one one Lexington Drive here in Montesreno. Um uh. Just wanted to say that I am one of those people that have applied to do a a lot split within Montesreno and, you know, we're not. All developers. I live at my parents' house and. One of the rain main reasons I want to do this is because. I want to still stay and live in Montesreno, and the only way for me to do that is to do a lot split and to build something, right? So I'm not. Just. Painting a picture of the other side that there's people in this town who have, there's families in this town who have. Young adults who still want to live here, and one of the main reasons. To live here is to split a lot to kind of like defeat that affordability thing that Mr. Allahi is talking about, right? So. Just wanted to call that out. I'm, you know. I'm sure there's developers who want to come in here and do something, but I hope that doesn't happen. Painting a picture on the other side that there's people like me who want to stay here. And build something on my parents' lot by splitting it. So just wanted to make that as public comment. Thank you.
Uh. I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah.
If, or sorry, staff has made a number of recommendations. Do you support those recommendations as to uh what they would like to do with SB nine lot splits?
Yes, I do. From what um Diana has put into slides and everything, like obviously I'm. Going to take a more detailed look because I just received and seen that deck, but from what I've seen so far, the recommendations make. Better sense than the, you know, eight hundred square foot that was allowed. Um and it seems like there's been more flexibility heard and and seen, but. I'll probably respond back via email and just to put in a little bit more thoughts, but. Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate what I've heard today.
Thank you.
Um.
Is there anyone else appearing remotely that has raised their hand?
I know the hands are raised.
Okay, if you.
There's a young lady here watching.
Yes. You're in chambers, please approach the podium.
Thank you. Uh I just want to put my comments.
Sorry, can you state your name?
Oh, uh I'm Alex. Um I live in uh one nine avenue. Um I just want to have a comment that. Uh I'm very glad that I appreciate the um city that have the make the movement. To uh revise the ordinance that's really help will help our family. And I understand a lot of you that have a concern that you raise, including uh uh Miss uh Lawler. Um I think a lot of have cynical concern. Those if you really from a perspective of against this uh um SB nine, then yeah, that's probably what you have, but. Um if you look, if you really from a developer perspective, it's not really a economically feasible, like building a uh. Uh sixty six hundred uh mansion house and then splitting to exceed in the half acre. No one would like it. So people will marketing is a magical invisible uh ruler that it's probably will never happen. I understand the hypothetical question, but it's just a. I'm just saying in general, this will benefit more the residents of the city uh rather than. You know, the the developer, and I really hope this will be helpful for for the people like us and like uh the other public comments that raised. And just another um. I don't think it's applied to our case, but I just think a lot of showcase is around um urban lot split. Um but I think there's another scenario is people don't do the split. But then what is the um case or looks like that without place, how many units? Because that's the night they have a provision that doing this play the word is enough. So. Uh this is just my input for people of work, you know, members to take a look and. Maybe some people will apply to their case that without please. Building more than one major unit. What it looks like. So not apply to my case, but that's my input. Thank you for listening.
I have one question and it is. Do you support staff's recommendation to move forward?
Uh oh, yeah, yeah. So I I like, uh I I will support, and I think. Uh Mr. Tony Jean, uh he's very responsible. He has a brilliant idea, and so. I also encourage you guys can take that into account. I think that will be helpful and make it even better. Yeah, thank you.
Uh I see that someone else in chambers would like to speak. Please approach the podium. State your name.
Hi, Bruce Lerman, uh live on one five nine five zero Rogan Court. And I guess house is on vice wheel. Um first of all, I want to thank Diana. Staff for putting this together. I'm impressed by the amount of work you've done. That's. Impressive. Um previously, the recommendations have been ignored. I think in the past when like back in December, when you made some recommendations to me. Um building size. Portionate to the size of a lot. It was kind of ignored. You went to the eight hundred square foot recommendation. And that might have changed things if she if you took our recommendations six months ago, right? I recommend that you follow her. I think they're good. They're sound. They make some good suggestions. It it can be modified, but I think. Based as the amount of work that she's put in. Comparing to other cities in the area, I recommend you. Go ahead and take her recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak? If so, please approach the podium.
One more.
And if you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand and you say we've got someone else.
Resident or Mr. Hall. Can you hear us?
Uh yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay, um. First of all, yeah, thank you and thank you for uh the staff of all the work that they've done. Um. I know that on the website there uh is a, there's a lot of information about SB nine. But I'm wondering if there's any. Other comprehensive list. That is uh available to us that would help us see whether we qualify for SB nine. Um. Because there's a lot of effort that goes into it. And then if, you know, you go in three quarters of the way and you find out you don't qualify. Um. It would be nice to have a real comprehensive list. Um the other, um I what the other thing I want to say is I. I do agree with what Tony Jeans is saying. I hope. You listen to that and. Make the changes more nuanced. And, you know, on a case by case basis. I think that the SB nine rule from the state. Is there are mo- there are places there that are not nuanced. And. Um. I mean, for example, the the fire issue, I guess, because isn't everybody in Montesreno in a high fire zone? But I guess you have a mitigation plan to be able to deal with that. Um. Anyway, there's no cha- no way to deal with the state, right? If you want to challenge anything that they're doing. Um. It's going to take several years for them to kind of fix things. Like they did with the ADU law, and now it's finally being able to. It's being used, I hear, a lot more than it was when it first came out. Is that the same thing with um? SB nine? Um. One other comment about people saying, well, this is just going to be for high end housing as opposed to short end. And you could make the analogy, this is like trickle down in economics. Is it going to really trickle down to? High density. Uh you know, is it going to increase increase the density of housing in 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 highly populated areas? Um. Who knows? You got to kind of throw a bunch of things at the refrigerator and hopefully things will stick. Um. I also think cha- forcing people to stay for three years. Is a little bit excessive. Maybe a year and a half. Maybe two years. Uh to avoid developers, yes. Who wants the developers to make all the money? But I mean, I don't know. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh. I'll call it again. If you are appearing in chambers and you would like to speak, please approach the podium. If you are appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No one wishing to speak, I will close public comment and bring it back to. Uh council, but but or sorry, to the joint meeting, but before I do so. I believe that there were several questions that were raised by uh during public comment. And um. Uh Ms. Perkins, if you would like to address those questions, uh please do so.
Well, I'm not sure that I got them all ready, Diane. Um but. For on the comment regarding the um slope or building on lots with a slope. Um. The current um slope density formula in the zoning code. Um is a set formula, so that is an objective standard. So um if so directed, we could um include that slope density formula. Um. In SB nine projects. Um if the council and commissioner to proceed with that. All right, I'm just reading through my notes here. Oh, I, there was another question um regarding slopes also. Uh I know the town of Los Gatos has a limit. Um or has a provision that does not allow SB nine projects to be constructed. On a portion of a lot that exceeds a thirty percent slope. So if there was um. There there is something similar to that um that could be added to our ordinance also.
Does that Los Gatos also have a SB nine restriction on retaining wall size? Think they put that in with this limitation. Maybe that's what we put the Gato on about.
Correct. Um I'm not sure I wrote down any other questions, but if anybody else remembers them. If they want, so let me know. I'll be happy to answer what I can.
I I I guess it it isn't one question, but. Uh Mr. Jeans had a whole list of stuff. Would would you care to comment on all these recommendations? And we've put in a lot of effort and we've known what we did is done here. But if you can do that, then we'll gather.
Sure, um for the maximum um building size. Again, the staff recommendations were um designed to comply with um HCD's interpretation. That SB nine lot should be um allowed the same development potential as the regular zoning standards. If um the. If a reduced. Um building size as suggested, perhaps ten percent. Reduction in the um sizes allowed. Or proposed to be allowed, I should say, for a one story building. Um and then. Or I'm sorry, less ten percent if the project. Does not meet the zoning code setbacks, but does does meet the reduced four foot setbacks mandated by the state. And then allow the full building size. Um if the setbacks are met. We could certainly look into that. Um consult with the city attorney to to see if um we believe that would be compliant. And on similar to the four hundred fifty square foot. Um garage requirement. So the idea would be that. On whatever building sites were allowed, it would be less four hundred fifty square feet. And that a four hundred fifty square foot. Um garage could be or that a four hundred fifty square foot garage could be constructed. To en- to encourage the garages. That's um something that that staff can look into to see if um. If that would be compliant. And then. So the the third one require, uh which is the staff recommendation to require two units constructed on a lot. Um the recommendation is that the first unit shall have a maximum size based on the level ADU size for that zoning district. Um which is what I believe the uh staff recommendation is. And then looking at um. The sheet the sheet provided by Mr. Jeans, number seven, which is regarding the partial street frontage. Um allowing. Um additional. Um driveway curb cuts to be reviewed. Um optionally through a discretionary process. Um that that could be allowed through um the site development. Um review process. That is included in the staff recommendation. And then um number eight. Having owners have the option of um constructing under the SB nine ministerial process. Or having the option to submit um the discretionary site development permit. Um.
So same, it's just waiting.
Okay, so that is the same as the staff recommendation. Thank you. I was trying to figure out the difference. And then um the last item, which is the neighborhood noticing. Oh, I'm sorry, you're adding, uh I'm sorry. The suggestion is to add an additional criteria. The suggestion is to add an additional criteria where, um, result, where a lot is less than six thousand square feet. Um, a lot that's created through SB nine would have a maximum unit size of eight hundred square feet. And we would need to, um, look into that one also.
Thank you. The other thing is that we received, um, I believe all the commissioners and council members received a letter from Ms. Joan Silverstein. And, uh, was staff able to review that? And do you have any comments? The letter from, um, Ms. Silverstein.
Yes, so I believe, um, what she's commented on is actually part of, of, um, Tony Jeans' verbal comments also. Um, I believe what they're asking is that, so currently, if there's a flag lot created either through SB nine or, or an existing flag lot or, or created through a traditional subdivision, um, the, the back lot which has the, there was the flag driveway and then, um, the notable area that is in the back. Um, the zoning code still requires a front yard, um, a front yard setback, and that would be typically the side of the lot that's closest to the street. So even though it, that lot would be front on the street, um, the parcel line closest to the, the street would generally be considered a front yard and require a thirty-foot setback. So I believe what they're asking is to reduce that setback. Um, since it really is, or it could be considered more like an interior, um, yard versus, um, a street facing yard. And then in the, the letter received from the Silverstein, there's also concern raised about, um, this front yard requirement limiting the ability to, um, split per lot. And under the SB nine provisions and the state mandates, the, if an existing building is to remain, the new lot lines do not have to be placed so that the existing building meets the setback requirements. So, in, in the event of an existing building and SB nine law split, um, the lot line could be placed closer than thirty feet to her front yard. Um, and that is not something that, um, the city could deny the application for. I don't know if that was clear.
Uh, yeah, um, what what I'd also like to ask is if there's only one driveway, then the lot split, the other whoever's land the driveway is not on, they would have an easement to get to their property, is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, um, all right, so we've addressed the public comments that we've received, or I, I have. And I'd like to bring this for deliberations now, and let's have a discussion, and, and then we'll come back to you right away.
My understanding is that a lot of why we're looking at this again, because we already, you know, did a draft ordinance. A lot of the reason we're looking at it again is we need to get enough SB nine applications, and we want to get more. We want to see more over our eight-year cycle. Um, I think an approach we need to really look at is one done by some jurisdictions, Saratoga and Los Alcos Hills, where they're allowing development proportional to the percentage of the lot split of the original lot. And if the new house is within the setback area of the zoning district, the maximum allowed is a smaller number. Um, Saratoga does a thousand, Los Alcos Hills does nine hundred. So in Los Alcos Hills, if you are in the setbacks, the traditional setbacks, you can build up to that zoning standard. You can get your nice large three thousand square foot, four thousand square foot house if you're back, um, like the rest of the homes in the neighborhood. If you are building to the lot line with a four-foot setback, then you can only do two nine hundred foot structures. Saratoga, same thing. If it's a nice big lot they're splitting and people want a big home and they respect existing historical setbacks, they can build that big home. You know, whatever, three hundred square feet, whatever it works out to in that particular lot. However, if they're building four feet from their neighbor from the fence, then it drops down to two, one thousand square foot units. I think that's something we need to look at, we want more SB nine projects. I looked at the properties in the Berlin or Cohen, um, letter and the properties Tony presented. Most of both are over an acre. So, um, I have in front of me the Berlin or Cohen ones, I think one property is one point three five acres, one's point, one point four one acres, one's point nine six. There should be plenty of space to split those huge lots and make some nice big home, family homes. Um, and, and we'll get those numbers in Saratoga in fact. And I looked at an article from February of twenty twenty-three, and it said that they'd had thirty-six total SB nine applications, twenty-one for lot splits and fifteen for new units. So when we look at already, we have, um, probably close to ten people that have come forward that said they want to do SB nine. They have over acre, they have lots of space. And if we did this approach that Saratoga and Los Alcos Hills are doing, they could build a, a home that's two thousand, three thousand square feet, something like that on the new lot. But then the ones, this, and, and we would start reading these numbers that we need for arena. The smaller lots, if we have this measured approach, we're not going to get the McMansions. Or, you know, if people want to build up the lot line, it's going to be a little smaller home and more affordable. So I, I think we need to have the, the two scenarios, the scenario one is we meet the zoning code setbacks, they get their nice big home on these lots these, um, gentlemen have presented. Or scenario two is when it's a smaller lot, that, um, we give them incentive to stay within the, the traditional setbacks, and if not, the two nine hundred, for example, square foot units that will be more affordable. State's goal is not McMansions, state's goal is more front doors. And, um, the one resident that said, I don't think it very, be very popular to build to the lot lines, no one would like that. That's most of the communities in the, this state, I mean, I, I grew up in Placerville, El Dorado Hills, Cameron Park subdivisions. You get massive homes, tiny little lots with very little space around them. And the economics are such that that's what we'll have unless we try and take a measured tailored approach like Saratoga and Los Alcos have had. Also, um, regarding SB three thirty and not reducing the intensity of development. In the scenario Liz mentioned and I mentioned earlier, if you, um, scrape the lot, build your sixty-six hundred square foot house, then split the parcel and build a, um, on the next half acre, a four thousand nine hundred fifty square foot house, you end up at roughly eleven thousand five hundred square feet, where before on an acre you'd have sixty-six hundred, or you'd have two half acres coming up at under ten thousand. That is radically increasing the intensity of development beyond what was ever, what we had in any zoning in our city. So I think it would be appropriate to do the math at the time of the parcel split. And when you already have sixty-six hundred, say, on one side, you know, make that complimentary amount, so you don't end up, you know, if you were building on two half acre lots, you'd have forty-nine fifty, forty-nine fifty max. Do the math at the time of the split and don't go beyond that, there's no need. I, I think we have to be careful about, um, how we interpret SB three thirty and its impact, and really think carefully. Let's see. Those are my comments.
I'd like to go to Commissioner, Commissioner.
I, um, my concept is that I think in order to maximize the incentive for people to even be interested in developing an ADU on their property, on the R forty-four lots, we need, we should consider increasing the size that we're going to allow on that something much greater than twelve hundred square feet. And I would think fifteen hundred square feet might be a number to consider, because, uh, it might. I just think that the people who are living there may want to downsize and do something else with their other house, like the guy that was on, on the phone a while ago. But there's really no incentive to build, uh, the most expensive square footage that you can build is going to be something with kitchens and two bathrooms. The extra square footage is much cheaper to do, and I think there's an incentive for people to move forward on that kind of basis, because we've got a couple hundred of these, we've got to try and do, and I think we've got a roadblock with the minimum of twelve hundred square feet. Expensive construction.
Okay. Councilmember Lahi, you, uh, wanted to make some comments.
Well, I, 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 I think I agree with the commissioner, basically, but what I would suggest is, uh, have the uh, and, and look at the, 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 seriously, consider them in. And, uh, also take a look at putting a minimum ADU, our first ours has to be, uh, an ADU in the new lot. Uh, interesting thing, the concept you brought up about the additional, uh, required footage for ADUs, fifteen hundred. My understanding is there is going to be another house built on the same rock, so there'll be the ADU plus another house. So they could actually build a fifteen hundred square foot as their main house or a bigger house. Then, uh, and the other thing I think we do need to consider is how to keep the maximum building, uh, size. Look, look at the existing lot, see what the size on that is, and do an adjustment for the new, uh, size that's going to go on the new lot. Uh, the third, the other thing I talked about is having, uh, restrictions put in the heat of, of years. And that's what discourages developers, whether we enforce it or not, would be a different issue. We can include mainly.
Uh, Twister White.
Thank you. I have, I really like the comments of our former mayors tonight. I think the slope density is something that we should definitely envelop into this statute. I think that deed restrictions on residency requirements are an element of what we should also adopt. And I think in response to Allison's comments, I think the setbacks are very important. I'm not sure about the garage comments, I don't want to see car parks. I want to see covered garages. So anything that discourages a developer from constructing a car, uh, garage, it's not something I'm supporting.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, I, I would like to go back to the parking requirements. HCD requires only one parking lot per house. And if you can imagine a house with only one car, that's not very realistic here in California, here, especially here in Las Vegas, you know. So we, we need to, to be able to address that, because I don't want, um, residents parking out in the streets. Because if we have a fire and all their cars are outside, then you can't get the, um, fire department to turn around. So we need to be able to avoid that, so I think that's one of the things we need to address. The second thing we need to address here that I, I still haven't heard is how do we go to HCD and say, here is our solution for low income, very low income, moderate and high income. Because they're going to ask us that. And what we've been talking about here is moderate to high income. So we need to be able to address that in order to pass our housing element.
Vice Mayor Wiltshire, thank you, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I agree with, uh, what several speakers said about, uh, total structural coverage of the lots, and we need to build in some kind of safeguard that, uh, prevent abuse. I actually did the calculation also, and I, um, if I did the numbers right, if I include two eight hundred square foot ADUs, I'm coming up with a number of thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty square feet of total buildings allowed. If ADUs are bigger, I'm not sure that's allowed, the number could be even higher, maybe as high as fourteen thousand square feet. I think we need to build in something, some kind of mechanism to prevent that kind of abuse. Where a developer buys with one acre lot, but an existing house, levels it, builds to the maximum, splits the lot, and then builds to the maximum on the new years, that's the, a newly created lot, so some kind of mechanism, I don't know what it is. But I trust you, uh, your judgment to come up with something, I'm happy here. My second comment is, I think about the comments that Mr. Jeans made, uh, make a lot of sense, pretty great product. Or I should be, we should consider some of those very seriously. Unless he wants to, uh, commend you on a tremendous job you've done in putting all of this together. Fantastic job.
Right. Yes, go ahead.
My concept of a larger ADU was in the event that there wasn't an urban lot square. So that you could have fifteen hundred feet, that's a lot less load than if you split the lot. The other thing you could do is on one of those lot splits by a developer, you might be able to say something like, when you pull this first building permit, if you don't pull, pull them at the same time, that there's freeze on the time that'll take for you to get the next building permit. On my street, we have building permits for eight or ten years of cars going up and down, little coves back, and I wish they'd freeze, freeze it or put a minimum construction time in, into that, so you aren't overburdened by the constant construction and freeze. Freeze is one you can get from that.
May I see?
Just, just one moment, I wanted to make a comment, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, follow on to Vice Mayor Wiltshimers. I believe under the green stormwater infrastructure requirements, if you cross a threshold, and I think it's around twelve thousand square feet or something lower than that, it triggers significant requirements. So my, my direction to staff would be, or my proposed direction would be to, uh, to consider in new applications for buildings, that if an SB nine's lot split were to occur within the next five years or within the, you know, pick a number, then the, uh, have a trigger point for, for the GSI, um, water issue, and I think that would have, that would address the issue that was raised by, uh, former mayor Lawler. Just, you know, for, for someone going all the way to the limit. Um, and I'll just go further and make a few comments, I thought that, that Mr. Jeans did have some, some uh, great comments, and I agree with, with staff considering those comments uh, going forward, as well as those from, um, uh, Joan Silver, Silverstein. Um, and now, sorry, uh, Councilmember Turner, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about number nine, um. Diana, um. I remember at the fifth, um, cycle, we had three hundred feet. And at that time, when, uh, we informed the residents three hundred feet of the church, and it happened to be the church. And later on, the residents came to, to City Hall, and they were upset because they said three hundred feet wasn't enough, they didn't hear about it. So I'm just a little bit concerned that if we go back to three hundred feet, that we don't inform the residents upfront. It's better to inform them upfront, be transparent, and say, hey, we're going to build around here, rather than. Rather than them not knowing and when everybody else is starting to build. Then all the residents gather and they say, hey, we were never informed. So I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted you to look at that, you know, investigate a little further. And, and be sure that, you know, we, we are transparent with the residents.
Could we do a hybrid approach on the noticing if it's onerous for you guys to have it six hundred feet around the whole perimeter? Could it be, you know, three hundred feet around the perimeter, but then more on the street where the residence is located? Because it, um, to Tom's point, it really impacts the neighbors, the construction and all that, the trucks going up and down. And let's let more of the neighbors know on that street, even if we drop the overall radius down.
City clerk. Could you put up the slide that has the timeline on it, please? I can't remember if that was your recommendation, what, what number that was. And maybe you could make the print a little bit bigger because I'm a fair ways away from, and it's not in the staff work. And I think that timeline is very important. Uh, to everyone in this room. And I'll write the dates down this time here. I think it's that, that one. So we've got October four seventeen. November seven. And then it'd be effective. December. December seventh, okay. So. Um, I'm just wondering. If there's any way you could. As you're preparing for October four. If, if we, if, uh. You could give city council at our meeting on the nineteenth. Kind of not a discussion item, but kind of an indication of where you're going. With the points, because if we don't give you very detailed and structured direction tonight, I wouldn't want you to kind of be going off. In a certain direction without us saying just, you know. If, if that would be acceptable to staff.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. And then, then site and architecture would be able to review it on the fourth. And then go through with, and then make a recommendation to, to council on October the seventeenth.
And could we have, could site and architecture have options? Rather than a yea or nay? On some of the things we've, where we've raised different ideas. Could you flesh out? More than one possibility?
Yeah, how, how are we incorporating some of these suggestions in, in relationship to?
Well, it's, so then we're to give staff direction, and that's just it. It's kind of. Pretty large. And not exactly prison. So, so I'm, you know, and if. If you'd like to answer the question about small alternatives to cited in architecture.
Is prepare the proposed ordinance and then in those areas where we have a couple of possibilities, we can have. Option A, B, and C, and then the site and architecture commission will just make a recommendation to the council and the recommendation that comes forward. Will be selected from those options.
Well, one of those options. Follow what is being done in Saratoga and Los Alfa Hills. Where you have proportional percentage of the lot and an incentive to build in the setback area.
If we get a consensus from you all tonight that you would like it to be an alternative that it could be.
I would be supporting that as an alternative for staff to, to review. Um, and maybe at this point in time, it'd be appropriate for staff to ask. Us questions to say, hey, I've heard differing views on this point or that point. Please give me some direction, or do you want to see both of those alternatives? And, and I'll, uh, Ms. Perkins also and, and, um. Uh, city attorney, I'll give it over to you to, to make sure that you've got the direction that you're looking for to be most efficient.
Yeah, I, I did have a comment of the notice, councilmember Turner is a good one. I think it's kind of silly though on this thing to give notice because nobody can do anything. It's a permanent process, so you live everywhere you know. But I think it's still a good idea to give a wider notice.
And I think that was staff's concern, and so the recommendation is to use the same noticing requirements that you do for any other project in the city. Keeping in mind that it is a ministerial approval, so there isn't any discretion. So we're happy to hear from the public. We want to get their feedback. But there's not a lot that we can do about it.
Maybe, maybe we need to increase the footage on the other process to make that, rather than get this from six hundred or three hundred. Maybe increase that to five hundred. Put this at five hundred also. So I, I, I would.
Or, or you could say the, the, a minimum of the. Three adjacent proper, or three properties on either side plus, you know, or. Sorry, the. The minimum of three on either side or whatever, or within five hundred or six hundred feet or whatever the numbers are.
Yeah, whichever is easier to do, I guess.
Councilmember Craig, thank you. A couple of quick questions. Are there any areas of Montesereno that are excluded? In terms of SB nine eligibility, are there any? High fire zones or, or any other land conditions that would? Not allow some properties to utilize SB nine?
So, um. Properties within the very high fire hazard areas can, SB nine is applicable to those properties. As long as they are constructed. Um, to meet the requirements of the building code for construction in such areas, which includes, um. Some additional fire prevention measures for the exterior of the building. And so that is a standard requirement for any new construction within those areas. And SB nine is not applicable to projects that are designated, um, or are designated historic resource.
Okay, and would there be any requirements to increase the access either through trying to improve the roads in the area?
So, um, unlike projects with discretionary review, um, the SB nine state regulations do not allow cities to require. Um, any sort of dedications or other public improvements with the project. Um, however, in terms of fire access.
Yeah.
Um, the fire department does review, um, all potential lot splits as well as new construction. And ensure that it meets their on fire code access requirements. So to that extent, um, it is required.
Cool, and we can't require them to remove your delicious trees, right? I'm gonna keep working on it.
As a follow up to his question, if we did employ a, a slope density ratio, there would be some loss that would be incapable of split, right?
Yeah.
I wish I had all sort of general and related.
So, uh, there's been a lot of talk about residency requirements and, uh, one thing that I would just like to, to make sure of is. One of the beauties of living and working in this area is the mobility that you have to take better and better jobs all the time. And it is not inconceivable that somebody will be offered a job that is. Going to greatly improve their, their income. And if they're under some kind of endurance because of, uh, SB nine lot split that they did. I, I would feel that that would be a little unfair because you're basically depriving somebody of these, of, of their economic opportunity. So. I, I understand that we're trying to prevent developers and. Flipping and, and all this other stuff, but I think we should also respect the, the actual homeowners because they're, they're probably just trying to do something that's. Good for their family and, and maybe bring in a little extra needed income for themselves also. So I just want to be respectful for that and not block anybody in. And I know we've already said, there's not much we can do. I mean, we're not going to force them to stay in a house, but. I just want people to know that we, we understand that there are circumstances out there that may. Not allow you to spend three years in your, in your new property. So bring it back to staff. Are there some questions that you have so that? So that we can give you where, where you have not got. Adequate direction from the, the joint meeting here tonight.
I think it's, uh, pretty clear. I think what, what we heard was slope density. Formula being applicable, um, the proportionate development. There was a comment about the increase in the ADU size, and I understand that is already a program in the housing element that we will look at increasing the size on the R one forty-four lots. So I think that will be handled through a separate ordinance. There were a few comments to consider Mr. Jeans' changes. And I wasn't sure if we wanted to go through each one or if just generally you were comfortable with his clarification.
I know that when I went through, uh, I believe, or sorry, when I was listening to, um. Ms. Perkins, she understood all the comments and which ones were. Were included and which were not. And I would defer to your judgment on that. But if other council members or commissioners want to, wait it, go ahead.
I have one question that I probably could have asked earlier. Does the ministerial review overrule any other ordinances that we may have in the city? For example, if you split a lot that has five. Very old beautiful oak trees on it. Can you just pull those out of the ground and build a fourteen nine hundred square foot house on them? We, we would never allow that to happen normally then.
When, um. SB nine regulations were first being considered, we did address there. Let me just pull up the code really quick in front of you, exactly what it says. So, um, for D can use as well as SB nine projects. Um, the city cannot deny the removal of trees. Um, that. Or cannot deny a true removal permit. For SB nine or ADU projects. We can't sit on that, but we did put in an objective standard. And I just found the other name, here it is. So, um, for tree removal permits that are in conjunction with an SB nine project or ADU. The city manager or city planner shall approve such, such tree removal permit. Um, subject to the requirement to replace each tree removed with no less than two trees. Each, um, that are either native or drought tolerant species. And that have a minimum circumference of ten inches. Measured at a height of forty-eight inches above grade when planted. So, um, the idea is to make significant replacement requirements for significantly sized trees and. Two new trees for each tree removed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, chair beside them.
Right, um, so kind of. In, in with, uh, uh, Vice Mayor's question. Who has the discretion on the lot split percentages and location and building site location and such? Who decides whether it's a forty sixty or a fifty fifty and whether we, you know, let them split this way or that way?
So the only regulations that the city can impose by those in our ordinance. So the location of the lot split of the new lot lines. As long as it complies with the objective standards in the ordinance is up to the property owner.
So if there are things we care about, like not making a bigger non-conforming parcel. Then, then we're required to. We could make an objective standard. Perhaps about how that breaks down. We could even make a objective standard. About what gets cut down and if there's a different way to split it. Yeah, I, one of the sites I reviewed on site and architecture. A year or two ago, I remember there was. A nice home on front and a just majestic oak that took a. Probably half the backyard. In some of those, we, we could say if you have a tree of a certain circumference. You know, orient the split if possible to preserve it. For the biggest trees. I mean, it, it would be a headache for a mid-sized tree, but there are a few. That we would hate to see chopped down and replaced with four units. A heritage tree. And there, there are ordinances, you know, up the peninsula about heritage trees. Where we could copy and paste some of the language. I know we can't prohibit development of the lot. But we could say that the, wherever possible, the split needs to be done in a way to preserve some of those largest trees.
I guess on initial thought of it. Objectively to preserve the trees, I think is difficult to define and. Again, just initial thoughts is that it may be. Difficult to, or maybe. That, um, is it more difficult for a property owner? It could encourage them to remove the tree.
Well, they can't now. You can't chop down a heritage tree now. I, I just. We need objective standards about how the lots get split if there are things that we want to protect.
Uh, could, could we also increase that number from two? To three or four? If you're taking down, like. Sometimes the tree configuration prevents the development of the lot, which is good or bad, but I mean to. You know, that's difficult.
Do any of us want to see a two hundred year old oak cut down? Have four little mini units? Or, I mean. If, if you can work around it, we should require people to work around it and it, it, it's maybe a little bit of a headache drafting wise. But Los Alfa's hills has probably looked at it. They, they have heritage trees. I, I think it's worth a minute to consider.
We actually have language, um, in the ordinance already. That deal that, um, Diana mentioned earlier about any tree removals that are in conjunction with an SB nine project. Um, there. Is a provision that says it shall not approve a permit for removal of a significant tree that is an oak species measure, measuring at least one hundred and fifteen inches in circumference at forty-eight inches. Above grade unless the applicant demonstrates one of the following. The project subject to managerial approval pursuant to SB nine. And municipal code ten oh six one forty H two. Want to see what that is. For projects. Subject to ten point oh five oh eight oh. Um, if the denial would have the effect of physically including the construction of the two units on the lot. So it sounds like we've done that. We can compare the definition there to make sure that it does cover, um, our heritage trees. Cause I think that was the intent.
I did, I think what the direction that we're hearing is. Come back with something that is going to protect heritage trees. That's the direction of staff without trying to. You know, wordsmith it from the dais.
Keep it in there. It's in there. Keep it in there.
You were going through some, some points. Were there any, any points that? That we haven't heard staff making that we want to hear in what comes back to. Site and architecture.
I, I, I want to clarify, so, um, as Polly said, that you'll come back with a suggestion about proportional split. Part of that is also the, if the new house is within the setback area of the zoning district. A maximum of whatever square feet allowed, nine hundred, a thousand, that's part of my suggestion.
That's one of, one of the issues that we'll look into.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you.
I think we heard um potentially differing opinions on the occupancy requirement. Deed restriction versus relieving the obligation under certain circumstances. So that might be an issue that we need more clarification on.
The occupancy requirement is state law. They require that a person be commit to living there in three years.
An affidavit and
Yeah, they require an affidavit that they're going to live there for three years as part of the state law. And I I think what's going to come back is in the enforcement. So if you are ever going to try to enforce it, then our city councilor will get to enforce it. Get to look at that. If the guy already got a job, he's got a goal, so fine. Let's get going. So we may we may uh suggest uh put some guidelines on how that's going to be enforced uh in their extenuating circumstance or whatever. But I don't think you can do it. But it's your garden because that's part of the stadium.
Right, and I did not mean to say that we need to eliminate it. I just want to make sure that people see that we're not going to chain them to a house.
Yeah, when it comes to that, I guess, depends on who's sitting on the house at the time.
I mean, we have
San Marino is a very desirable place to live. It would be a great place to be chained to a house.
May we have a little mini update on how many jurisdictions have gotten their housing element approved? Because I I remember a year ago, the Southern California districts that had to submit their housing element, but most of them hadn't been approved. So where are we now on that? Do have all of our neighbors have theirs approved? Is is everyone um compliant, sir?
I know Campbell and Los Altos Hills have had theirs approved, and then there's a sprinkling of others, but uh La- Los Catos, Cupertino, Saratoga, Mountain View, Sunnydale, I do not think they've had theirs approved.
I think there's about four in the county that have been certified.
So we're right in the mix at the stage we're at.
Four of fifteen.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, I was overcracked. Thank you. So I just, I'm not sure if I heard this anywhere, but how many S B nine official applications have we received?
One, and it is still in the review.
Okay, and how many interests or how many people have expressed interest? I see from the public comment, there was some letters and it sounded like there's three or four people that are interested. Is that a good number or?
So um we do get inquiries every week um about various um sites throughout the city. Um off the top of my head, I would say sort of um consistent property owners who we consistently hear from um who I believe are strongly interested in the S B nine. I would guess ten.
Okay, and would you say they're from the larger parcels in the city or?
Yes.
Okay. Adicately, I'll say that I've probably had six to eight people in contact me individually. And then when they start asking questions, I defer them to Ms. Perkins. And then the other thing is is that I had quite a few people contact me and say, hey, this eight hundred square foot thing is just is unacceptable. And I said, you know, we're going to take another look at that. But that has evolved to where we are today.
Yeah.
Can I just talk a little bit about some research that I had found? Just just a couple of minutes. I know it's starting to get late, but I found a an article called S B nine one year later. And something I thought that was interesting was that Los Angeles only received twenty eight applications in their first year versus Saratoga received twenty one. So I thought that was kind of interesting. Um and Danville actually received twenty. So it does seem like these applications do come from cities where properties are were expensive and a lot sizes tend to be a little bit larger. So and I don't think that's any big surprise to us, but you know, you could definitely see how I think our our current S B nine regulations have really put the put the kibosh on S B nine applications here.
Can I say something too?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Turner, go ahead.
And and SCAG, for example, they're ahead of of A Bag, which is in our region. They only have thirty one percent approved from H C D. To answer your question, I don't know what we have here, but in SCAG, it's thirty one percent. So everybody's behind. Um I think one of the things that other cities are struggling with is how do you solve the low income and the very low income category? And unless we can solve that, then chances are we won't get approved. And and so you know, I also heard that many of the employees from H C D have been leaving H C D. So.
Let's let's go over the list of things that we would like to see in a proposed ordinance to go to site and architecture and work on it at our next meeting in October. Or any other issues that?
I I think we've covered most of those, and I think staff ha- have, but first of all, I think the work that staff have done based on the direction that we gave them was exceptional. And I think we heard that the I points identified by Mr. Jeans were we would like staff to look at each of those points. I believe the uh points made by um Commissioner Zidler uh that were echoed by uh Councilmember Alahi. We want staff to look at those. I'm not, and I think staff are are wondering about the residency, but that's a little murky. Um I think we heard about the trees and we also heard that we wanted um staff to take a look at Los Altos Hills and uh and Saratoga. But I think that was wrapped as as well in the comments that Mr. Jeans had made in his recommendations. So you know, the the further you or the more you stay inside, the better uh of the setbacks versus going to the uh absolute minimum. You know, you get a you get a you're encouraged to do that. And then the other one is looking at for new properties that are built or proposed, if you build this property and then you do an F B nine lot split, you have to, you know, follow certain maximum coverages or whatever so that you can't get into that the the uh situation that uh former mayor Lawler spoke to, because we do not want that. I, does that, I'll ask the group, does that summarize what?
It's good.
Oh, and then I'm sorry, also separately, the maximum A D U size. But that was kind of a separate issue. Did did I miss something?
And the slope.
Oh, sorry.
Slope and retaining wall.
Yes.
So proportionate development, uh dependency requirement, slope density, um an objective standard for a nonconforming lot, uh trees, Mr. Jean's recommendations. I think that's it.
Okay. Uh so just to wrap it up, does staff have the destination, the direction to proceed?
Yes, we do.
Can I ask one question?
You may. You may, absolutely.
So so the timeline, what's that derivative about? Do we have some impending date after December that we need to acknowledge and recognize?
Yes, so in our housing element that's currently submitted um to H C D, the um city has committed to revising our S B nine ordinance by the end of the year. And um that is part of our program to encourage S B nine projects in order to meet our requirement without missing the whole diagram.
Okay.
I have a question. Can I ask a question and put it out there?
It's hard to reopen the public hearing. Is it required right now or can it be handled afterwards? After the meeting closes, can staff answer that? Then I have to reopen the public hearing, and I would prefer not to do that.
Then leave it and I'll ask it at the next one, but I think we have a problem. That's all.
What, the city attorney? Okay, I was, can I reopen the public hearing?
It's up to you.
Considering that they're gonna take a lot of your recommendations.
If you allow one, you must allow.
Oh, no, no, I I will. Uh at this point in the evening, I will reopen the public hearing. If you would like to speak, please, and you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hat. If you're appearing in chambers, please approach the podium.
I just want to caution one area, and that is in instructing or directing staff to make any recommendation, please make sure that it is something that once a lot split has been done, that one lot is not subsequently dependent on what happens on the other lot. So anything proportionate must be a one-off deal and can no longer balance one against the other. Saratoga has a terrible problem. I'm fighting with with projects in Saratoga because of that. Because they said, whatever you do has to be, if you're allowed six thousand square feet and you've got four thousand here, you can only have two thousand there. If someone does an addition, then that person loses it. So it's got to be something that is simple. It's got to be really simple or you will not be able to police it. Down the road, you will have a disaster on your hands. So please, if you're going to make it proportionate, and if that's what you want to do, I don't suggest you do, but if that's what you want to do, then make it a one-off deal. You've set it proportionally and then this lot inherits a set of criteria that it's stuck with with the rest of its life and never is changed based on what happens on the second lot. So if a lot split happens and some guy builds six thousand, all of a sudden on the other one, I don't want you to say, oh, now on this lot, four years later, you can only build two thousand square feet because this guy has built more. So don't make it something that is proportionate and infinitum. It's got to be a one-off deal. Just worry worry about that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. We just said that. Hold, 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 hold on, I have to. No, no, I have to ask if there's any other member of the public that is here, hearing in chambers, please approach.
I I just want to mention that I think that it is well taken. Um when you're looking at actual lot versus effective zoning, um once if it's a blank lot and it's split proportionately, it's there are now two effectively R one twenties or whatever they are. So as long as we found a structure on it, I don't think that would be an issue. It's only if there's an existing structure that is maxed out and then the lot is split. That's just for clarification.
Thank you. If you are appearing remotely and you would like to make a public comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you're appearing in chambers, please approach the podium.
My public comment is I'm going to refer Martina.
Do you have Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall, do you hear us? Do you hear us?
Yes, um does a comprehensive list exist that um to find out if you do qualify um that is not on the website and if not, can one be created that's more extensive that you would be using? I mean, in reference, basically that you would be using when you go through the application approval process.
Thank you. Um I'm gonna I'm gonna see if there's any other public comment. If you're appearing in chambers, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. At this point, I will close public comments.
My name is Johnny. I live in Bama Avenue. So I just want to acknowledge every uh comments I made. I just want to make one point. So I understand that people trying to uh, you know, make the regulation make sense. But meanwhile, we wanted to uh have the uh reasonable uh condition and the uh town should have a a a channel to review and make it a a way to preserve the monkey's written characters. But I want to say that uh our direction uh should be uh uh straight and simple and should be able to easier to follow up in the in the future. If we're trying to make it really complicated and more complicated it become, it's really hard for them to come together that there will be uh fact or there will be loophole, say, and we have to continue to um making the amendment to it. So uh in that way to make it effective, we should think of it should be easier to maintain. I understand. Uh if we have like a a twenty rules and people go through them and really don't know what is going on, that will be really hard to to follow. And the maintenance is also a become hassle. And if we have to um do the continuity maintenance of this, that'll be really hard to please that. So that's my feedback for this. Yeah, thank you. But I I do want to, once again, uh appreciate that the council uh gesture to continue to modify the uh S B nine uh regulation to make it uh make sense and uh I really respect the public feedback. And I think as a very important fact, it's going to help the town for the uh home management's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll say it one more time. If you're appearing in chambers and you would like to speak, please approach the podium. If you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hat. No hands raised, no one approaching the podium. I will close public comment and bring it back. I I believe there was a a question raised regarding uh instructions and I'll let staff answer that, please.
So yes, the website, um the city's website does include a page for S B nine projects. And that page does include um general information for those um S B nine developments as well as lot splits that includes all of the um requirements of the um state as well as our local ordinance um and what properties are eligible for um either of those applications. Um as well as um the site also includes the actual applications and documents that are required to be submitted with each application.
Thank you. Just to clarify, those, that information is based on our prior or our existing regulations. So to the extent that it changes, that will become obsolete once we go through the full approval process and it becomes uh an ordinance.
Correct, and then that information will be updated.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a suggestion that we place that document under our popular link section. That I have a feeling it's going to be more popular.
And I is there, are there any other comments or direction that we would, we the joint council members and commissioners would like to give to staff? Or staff would like additional clarification on?
I I I would just like to thank the staff for doing an excellent job.
I agree.
You're incredibly impressive. I every question I asked, you answered it and answered it quickly. And you're just very impressively.
Oh, yes. City manager, do you have any comments on this at this point in time? Any comments on what's on the agenda at this point in time?
No further comments.
Thank you. Well, with that, I believe I'd like to adjourn the joint, the special joint meeting of the Site and Architectural Commission and City Council at eight thirty P M.